Okay, at this time we'll call the meeting door with the Pledge of Allegiance. Before we stand up, we have Troop 320 Boy Scouts, so we'll have them come up and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Perfect. All right, there you go.
Yep.
(inaudible)
Pledge of Allegiance to the light of the United States of America and to the Republic
for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, thank you. They're working on their citizenship and community merit badge, so thank you, boys. We'll move on then to Agenda Item Number Two, which is the introduction of our new Director of the Marshall, Lion County Library Director. And if you want to provide the introduction, Michelle, we'll have you come forward and...
Bio? Sure. All right, I was provided a bio and I have not pre-read it, so I'm reading off the cuff here, so... Correct me if I get the last name wrong again. Michelle Lenniger. Lenniger, excuse me. We have met, and I apologize for getting that wrong. Lenniger, a 2014 graduate of the PhD program at the University of Pittsburgh's Information School, has been working in libraries since 1990, with a BA in History from Carleton College and an MLS from the University of Pittsburgh. She has worked in libraries in North Dakota, Pennsylvania, New York, Iowa, and Washington State. Prior to coming to Marshall, she completed a part-time post-doc at the University of Pittsburgh, teaching and working on recruitment for Pitts Library and Information Science Program, while also consulting with the Carnegie Library of Pittsburgh to create a new service model and develop a plan for the subsequent organizational change. Welcome.
Well, welcome, Michelle.
Thank you.
Let's give her a round of applause. If you want to say... Michelle, if you want to say anything, you can.
I hope you all stop by the library and say hello, and like to meet everybody at the library, and that's the great thing about working in a public place, right? Everybody hopefully needs to come to the library, and when you are in, please stop by and ask us a question.
Once again, welcome.
Thank you.
Move then to Agenda Item Number Three. Consider the agenda that we have before us. Are there any changes to the agenda this evening? If not, we'll operate under that agenda. We'll move to Agenda Item Number Four. Agenda Item Number Four is to consider the approval of the minutes of the work session that the City Council held on January 12, 2016, as well as the minutes of the regular meeting that was held also on January 12, 2016. So, the Council does have the minutes of both of those meetings. Are there any corrections to note at this time?
I move approval of the minutes.
Oh, second. Motion by Craig, second by John. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. Motion passes. Agenda Item Number Five. Agenda Item Number Five, consider the authorization to purchase scoreboards for Independence Park. We do have the recommendations, the detail with us tonight. Preston Stensrud from the Parks Department, give us any details, as well as address any questions. Welcome, Preston.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Tonight, we have a proposal to purchase two new scoreboards from Dectronics to replace the existing scoreboards out at Independence Park Baseball Fields from 1993. They use all incandescent bulbs. We are utilizing the cooperative purchasing agreement through the Southwest-West Central Co-op for price from Dectronics, for two of them, $10,947. I also am recommending replacing the existing telephone poles that the scoreboards are mounted on with I-beams for the new scoreboards. That's an additional $1,400. And then we are eligible through a lighting retrofit to the LED from Marshall Municipal Utilities, an amount of $945. And the Marshall Area Youth Baseball Association has come forward and wanted to participate in this project and doing a cost share of 50 percent. So after what the new I-beams, and figuring in the MMU rebate, the net cost to the city is $5,701. And we would invoice MABA back for the other half that they would pay in full. Originally, when we did the budget, they were thinking a two- or three-year payback period, but they've said they'd be willing to contribute all at one time, so...
Thank you, and this is included in the 2016 budget?
Yep.
And the I-beam that will prevent the issues that you had with the heaving of them?
Yep, yep. The I-beams, according to Dectronics drawings, are argued in seven feet deep. And Utilities has also offered to help with drilling those holes, so we don't have any additional costs in that.
Very good. Questions on the recommendation?
What did you mention about the wooden poles? There was a problem in the past with them heaving with the frost?
Yeah, before, the frost pushed them up. They're not concreted in or anything, they're just sitting there. They're also not as pleasant looking as when it's mounted on the I-beams, not as clean of a look. And longevity-wise, if we ever maybe talk about possibly adding some advertising stuff on their own, it'll mount better to those I-beams versus screwed into it.
On the handout you gave us, there's about these savings of $101 per year?
Mark Andy from MMU figures based off wattages, and they take hours of use, which is really hard to put an exact number on, but he figured we use it four months of the year, every day. The $101 is our energy savings throughout one year of use for the scoreboards.
Is the existing scoreboard... Are the existing scoreboards worn out, then?
Yep, they're all the incandescent bulbs, and no parts are available, other than strictly the bulbs. I mean, if there's any drivers or anything that go bad, they're not available. Very pleasant.
Because the concern I had is we're going to spend $11,000, and if we're only saving $100 a year, that's really not a good reason to replace it.
There's also a lot of maintenance and changing the bulbs. I don't know exactly how many each scoreboard has, but it's probably 100 to 130, somewhere in there. And each one, you gotta take a little screen off, it's very time-consuming. The LEDs come with a five-year warranty, and the whole panel comes out, two screws, and you plug it in, the whole thing's done, so...
Other questions on the recommendation?
Is that about the life expectancy of a scoreboard, then?
No, it'll be way longer than five years out.
No, no, what I mean, we've had ours for about 23 years or so.
Yeah. I wouldn't be comfortable putting a number on that, but I'd say they've served their purpose. They've got a lot of hours of use.
In and outside all the time.
Yep, exposed to the elements.
I move the recommendation.
Motion by Larry, sir, second. Seconded by David. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. Motion passes. Thank you, Preston. Move then to the next agenda item. Agenda Item Number Six. Agenda Item Number Six, consider the purchase of the scoreboard for the Red Baron Expo Center. Once again, we have the recommendation for the purchase of the various pieces that was also included in the planning for the arena. With us tonight is Harry Wielagie. Address any questions. Harry, you want to give an overview on the recommendation?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor and Council. Obviously, this is starting to be an exciting time, and we're starting to wind down the building project out at the arena. The painting's been done, and the work on the new scoreboards for the arena are obviously integral part of the hockey program that we have out there. Both of these products from Dectronics are the latest, just as you heard from Preston. Minimal maintenance, low wattage use, LED, state-of-the-art. And for the regional sports center, needing the type of product that we have from Dectronics is well-respected in our community, university, and high school. Legion Field Hall has Dectronic products, so we're pleased to make this recommendation. And the nice part about it as well, they're made in Redford Falls, so it's a local product. I would answer any questions on the scoreboards.
Thank you. Questions on the recommendation?
I move the recommendation.
Motion by John.
Second.
Seconded by Craig. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote.
Mayor, one question. Perhaps I'm missing something, Harry. Is this just for the main arena, the main rink?
Correct. We're moving the existing scoreboards from Lockwood Arena, which is probably five years old, and using them in the secondary rink out in...
Thank you.
And they're being donated by the Hockey Association.
They're being donated by the Hockey Association, correct.
Other discussion on the motion? If not, we'll move to a vote. Motion passes. Agenda Item Number Seven. Agenda Item Number Seven is to consider the approval of the Red Baron Arena and Expo LED video display equipment and the installation. Once again, we have the recommendation on the purchase for the video screen from Dectronics. We have the recommendation details in our agenda. Harry, again, you can provide any overview and then address the questions.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Obviously, this is one of the more exciting pieces to our facility from the regional standpoint. Interesting, as a council knows, this design is really unique to the community, the facility in the main rink with the 90-degree seating at the end and along the side. And there's really two things that we looked at when we looked at the video board and the scoreboards for this. We're not just for the hockey facility, but also for the Expo. And traditionally, you would see a hockey or a scoreboard, even a video board, hanging from the center ice area. And so, there was a lot of detail, a lot of thought, and a lot of reviewing other facilities to make sure that we had the opportunity to expand the use of this space, this 22,000 square feet, for what the community wanted from the Expo. So this video board allows us... This is the view from the club room, which is, again, 22,000 square feet, so long ways away when you're looking at it from the floor space. This is going to allow us to utilize during concerts, product shows, banquets, possibly even the prom, to utilize this space. And I can tell you, there's been a lot of excitement from both our business community and, obviously, from our sports community on what this video board will produce for the Red Baron Arena and Expo area.
Okay, thank you, Harry. Questions the Council may have?
So it's $427,000, almost a half million dollars for this video?
That is correct.
That's a lot of money.
It is. In competing with the communities that we're trying to recruit here, from the teams from Fargo, and Watertown, and Brookings, and Sioux Falls, and Omaha, these are things they expect to see. This is not just simply Marshall's hockey arena. This is the region's hockey and Expo arena, and Expo. And if we're going to have those types of things to happen, and have those types of teams coming to our community and staying here, that's kind of information one.
Same... Harry, the Council has this information, but you may want to give the details about what's the dimensions, what's the height?
Oh, sure. The board is about 24 feet long by 14 feet high. It will give high definition. We'll have five cameras that'll allow us to do replay. And during the product shows, actually, we'll have live cameras walking around on the floor to show the product show. Or during the product shows, if it's different manufacturing zip drives, you'll be able to do those types of things across it. We've even talked about the Pheasant's Frether, the Ducks Unlimited, and allowing those videotapes to be going on during the auctions and during concerts. So it really brings a lot of flexibility to this space for our community.
Ben?
Harry, included in our packet was some items on service agreements, Platinum Service and Gold Service. Is that included in this, or is that going to... Just information attached, or is that... Where does that stand in this?
Ben talked about that. We went through that yesterday with the...
Thank you, Attorney, Members of the City Council. The two agreements are exhibits to the main agreement. So the Platinum Services covers the first year, so it's parts, labor, service issues that come up. And then the Gold Services Plan are four years, two to five. And it's just basically more limited, related to parts only. So the other one includes some of the things related to programming, and displays, and video components, that we can have to get expertise on that. So, yes, they're both included with that. There are some details...
Also, tech support line during events, if there's problems too, isn't it? At the first year of the Platinum leases?
That's right. And we also... One of the details that we're working on finalizing, so it'd be kind of... We would negotiate this final detail out, is the... When would that... Mr. Wielagie brought this up in our meeting. When would the start date occur? And so, we're trying to get it to start when our primary activities start, so ideally, like November, but potentially October, rather than substantial completion, which would be before, you know, this first summer. Due to the scheduling and things, you're not going to see as much activity because of the uncertainty to guarantee that we'd be opening at the right start point. So we're trying to get the year to start for the warranty kind of later, so we're working to finalize that. But those are included with the agreement. It does also include all installation costs. There's some minor electrical work. There's electrical in that location. We have to do some minor extensions of that, so that would be our responsibility. We're working with our construction manager on some of those details. But all of the connections to our rafter systems and installing this is all... They handle all of that, and basically turn over the keys with a functioning video board for us after the fact.
Timetable for installation delivery?
If it's approved this evening, by the middle of May, installation, it'll allow us to do summer training for the programs coming forward, and I keep my fingers crossed it should be available for grand opening.
Any other questions for Mr. Wielagie?
Harry, sometimes I'm not totally cognizant, and I forget something. Wasn't part of the Avera package, was it under $500,000, that donation set aside for this?
That was the...
Was it a $500,000?
Correct.
That's what I thought. Okay, thank you.
If I could build... Thank you, Mayor. If I could build on Larry's question, and I'm a little hazy on this also, so clarification. With that $500,000 donation, Avera is getting a sponsorship or naming status specifically with the video board?
Correct.
So that'd be an appropriate...
You look underneath the scoreboard picture. Underneath the scoreboard, there's six panels, so there's room for up to six sponsorships in the arena.
I see that over there. But for half a million dollars, I don't think Avera is terribly interested in buying part of a six-plex. Where would their naming... Maybe at that top side-to-side panel?
Ben, why didn't you address that?
Thank you, Attorney, Members of the City Council. Technically, the agreement says we'll negotiate that out with them as part of the contract, so I've not had the chance to formally sit down to verify that. But Harry is correct, that the major sponsors probably will vary between four and six. We've got the ability for up to four. The contract also gives them certain rights per event to run video on this video board. So that's the combination of the two, is sponsorship recognitions on a backlit, permanent sign, which is this can be this area, and then basically the video board. We might... What's undetermined is, are there other entryway areas that we might have some minor recognition? But one of the things, and Avera's aware of this, that we wanted to avoid in this facility in comparison to some of the facilities, is to be... To recognize sponsors and their contributions, but to also be sensitive to the fact that it's an Expo, and we want to make it look professional and limit the amount of signs, and the signs that we do have, that they look very professional. So when we formally meet with Avera for their approval of those final sign designations, that's part of the package. So I'm confident that we'll work things out. It might get tweaked a little bit, but that's primarily their sponsorship recognition that they'll get with it.
Okay, but it is linked explicitly to the video board?
Well, it's everything that was included with that included. It didn't necessarily itemize everything out, it was more generic. So the Avera Plaza, and dedicating funds to that outdoor plaza area, is part of that as well. So it included some signage on the inside, it included recognition on the video board, and then basically the plaza. That's their recognition pieces with the $2 million contribution.
I don't mean to belabor this, but there was an understanding that by their participation, they were supporting the installation of this video board.
Yes, it was explicitly included that there would be a video board. It did not specifically define the size and scope of the video board component with that. But the discussion was an expectation that this is a regional facility, much like the hospital's goal to grow. They wanted this facility...
Two more questions. And I... Since I wasn't here when we adopted all this, what was the provision in the budget for this feature? Or was it in the original cost plan?
Mr. Mayor, Members of the City Council, the designation that we had within the dollars that Avera came in that was earmarked towards it was a half a million dollars with that.
When we adopted... The previous council adopted the project and its specs, was that the figure that was used in the cost estimates? Or did this come later?
We did not have the video board included in the original budget, so it came later in the process. It was not the...
Okay, that'll do. Thank you. Then one other question, Harry or whoever. What's the expected lifespan of this feature?
Well, the warranty is good for five years. Dectronics boards, we've had great experience with them. This is our first LED piece. We've had 10, 15 years. You heard from Preston, their products. Go ahead, Ben.
I don't know the expected life, long-term, for this expressly, but one thing with the design of the Dectronics is that they're individual panels. So if you do have a problem with a particular panel here, I'm not sure how many panels are in it, but you replace that single panel, rather than having to replace all of them. So we do have a net, as an example, that's protecting pucks from able to hit it, but if something strange were to happen and there was damage to it, you can replace the individual panels.
It's not like your old TV tube. When it goes, it goes.
Right.
All right. Thank you. Thank you.
Other questions?
Ben, is the money for this scoreboard, did it come from the pension trust fund, or from the foundation money?
We didn't itemize within the contribution where the monies came from. It was a total contribution of $2 million. So one million of it came from the one source, and the other million came from the other. We didn't itemize which one it came from related to that.
First of all, the money that went to the foundation was supposed to be used for healthcare, my understanding. And second of all, the money that went to the pension trust fund, when it was no longer needed in the trust fund, it specifically stated that it would revert to the city of So if it was no longer needed in the trust fund, it became Marshall's money, not Avera's money.
Yeah, just...
Other questions, other discussion? The Council does have the recommendation.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I think because of the donation from Avera, that we're going to have a state-of-the-art scoreboard and video board, both. I think it's something that we can be very proud of for a lot of good years, and it's going to be a number-one draw for this area. I think we'll be up and above most anybody that's in the surrounding area. I think we need to be proud of that, so I'm going to make the motion to approve the recommendation.
Motion by Larry, sir, second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Craig. Discussion? Now we'll move to a vote. The motion passes. Agenda Item Number Eight. Agenda Item Number Eight is the consent agenda. We'll bring the items on the consent agenda up on the screen. On the consent agenda, consider the adoption of the resolution approving the data practices policies for members of the public, the data practices for data subjects. Consider an application for an on-sale intoxicated liquor license for Marshall Area Chamber of Commerce. Consider the approval of a tobacco license for Marshall Golf Club. Consider the application for exempt permit for the Shades of the Past for June 4, 2016. Consider an application for an on-sale intoxicated liquor license for Marshall Area Chamber of Commerce. And then consider the approval of the bills and the project payment. So is there any item on the consent agenda that any member of the Council wants removed for a separate discussion? If not, I entertain a motion on the consent agenda.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Craig, seconded by John. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. Motion passes. Move on then to the next agenda item. Agenda Item Number Fifteen. Agenda Item Number Fifteen is to consider the resolution approving the amendments related to the MRES, Missouri River Electric Service Power Sale Agreement S1. We have a resolution to consider on this. With us tonight is Brad Rose, the General Manager of Marshall Municipal Utilities. Welcome, Brad.
Mayor and Councilmembers, thank you for, again, having this on your agenda as a follow-up from our January 12 work session, when we spent about 45 minutes in detail looking at the materials that had been assembled in support of the adoption of this resolution. As was pointed out that evening, the MMU Commission has adopted a recommendation to the Council to adopt the resolution. And within the packet that was handed out at the January 12 meeting, as well as here, I believe it was part of your packet, is the full resolution. After that work session, I haven't had any other requests for further clarifications or discussions, so I'm assuming that resolution is ready to be considered, Mayor. I stand here ready to answer any questions that someone might have received.
Okay, thank you, Brad. First, are there any questions for Brad? Or any questions about the resolution? If not, I would entertain a motion on the resolution.
Just like to say a couple of things on that before we get to that point. You know, long-term planning, sometimes in businesses, we talk about maybe five years down the road, or whatever. Here, we're talking 40 years down the road, and it's... Five years just doesn't come close on utility planning when you're trying to put up power plants and everything else. Just glad to see that we have both a commission and an organization that is willing to think out that far and set up some things, and are good relationship with Missouri River Energy Services and with Marshall Municipal Utilities doing that. And with that, I would make a motion to pass the S1 amendments to the power sales agreement.
Second the motion.
Motion by John, seconded by David. Discussion on that motion? I would just... John, well said, and I would also thank Brad for your leadership here, as well as the Any other discussion on the motion? If not, we'll move to a vote. Motion passes.
Thank you. On behalf of the commission, and the MRES Board, of which I'm their secretary, I want to say thank you. This same action is being considered in 60 other communities that are members of Missouri River over the last several months and the next month. And every time that we've gone out for a contract amendment or extension, 100 percent of the member communities have said, yes, we want to sign up for the extended contract. So thank you for your support.
Very good. Thank you, Brad.
Thank you.
We'll move then to Agenda Item Number Sixteen. Agenda Item Number Sixteen is to consider a resolution authorizing utility refunding bond issue. And once again, Brad, I'll call on you, as well as you can introduce, Terry.
Thank you, Mayor. As you know, as we do our partnership work together, the Council, the commission, during the fourth quarter of every year, one of the things that we do together is planning for the next year's bonding. In 2016, MMU does not have any new money bonding in support of our capital work plan, but we do have a refunding that we're pretty excited to bring to the Council's agenda this evening. The MMU Commission, at their last meeting, adopted a resolution, again, recommending the authorization of... the authorization of this refunding. Now, to get to the details, I'd like to turn to our, our shared financial advisor, Terry Eaton with Springsteen Associates.
Welcome.
Brad, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, there's a proposal this evening asking the City Council to approve of going forward with the refunding for the MMU. There's a recommendation in the packet. The recommendation is to issue $7,545,000 of refunding bonds to refund three bond issues, 2006A, 2007A, and 2007B. And that sale would occur on March 23 and be awarded by the commission at 4:30 that evening, the sale, the bids would be received in our office at 11:00 a.m. The, the reason to do it is to save money. And so these three, because interest rates are so great right now, these three refundings in total would save present value about $538,000 for the years 2017 through 2023. There's about $200,000 a year that, that would be received in raw dollars and the number I gave you was present value. So this is, this is a huge savings for them. They would, these bonds are current refundings, and so I think it's important to the city. What that means is every year jointly you plan to try to stay within a bank-qualified range so that you have more bank spitting on these bonds and increasing the pool and getting lower rates overall. The city does have some bond issues they'll be doing later in the year, so we have coordinated. The good news is that these three issues are current refundings and as such, they do not count as part of that BQ. And so you have the refundings that you have would mean for the year, the city would still be able to issue bank-qualified BQ bonds. So I think, and I think the other thing is the, the bonds are a strong refunding. You try to look for 3% or more on average as savings, and that is savings as a percentage of the dollars issued. And on average, these are about 7.1%, so three really good candidates and strong refundings. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
I think this also was discussed by the Ways and Means Committee earlier.
Yes, we did discuss that just prior to this meeting, Ways and Means. And there is a recommendation from the Ways and Means Committee to have, as the council to pass this or approve the bonding issues. With that, I will make a motion to authorize the resolution.
Motion by John, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by David. Discussion? Discussion will move to a vote. Motion passes. Thank you, Terry. Thank you, Brad. Agenda item number 17. Agenda item number 17, consider the approval of the information security policy.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm here on, to explain to you the information security policy that we've been working with Marshall Municipal Utilities on and some concerns that were brought up at the Ways and Means Committee and how we're going to address those concerns. The information security policy itself is a way for the city and MMU to work together to safeguard our electronic information assets. We need to ensure legal compliance. We need to ensure integrity and confidentiality. We need to provide employees with parameters around minimizing that risk. We need to ensure continuity of operations and we need a stable and reliable infrastructure. To do that, we have a set of policies, the policy that you've been provided, as well as 12 procedures written to help employees do that. The policy that I've requested for your review was a joint effort with RSM, formerly McGlady and Pullen. They were consulting with MMU on this. We made no substantive edits to that policy. We just made it fit for the city of Marshall, changing titles and such, but otherwise, no edits were made to that original policy. MMU's board has already approved this policy as well as the procedures, and they are training their employees on these. If you approve tonight, we will in turn do the same, work with our employees to understand them and to start integrating them into their daily work lives. One of the concerns brought up at the Ways and Means Committee by council member Kramer was unintentional mistakes that employees might make, which go outside of the compliance of the policy or the procedures. For instance, that might be someone plugs in a zip drive into their computer that hasn't been checked to make sure that it doesn't have any viruses in it. This is basically a base level from what's been explained to me, a base level of security that we need to start with our employees and with our systems. We may continue to ramp up. We may continue to revise the procedures as we go along, but this is a base level that we really need to start working with our employees on. If unintentional mistakes are made, it is not our intent to discipline employees. It's our intent to train employees and to help them become more aware of the things that can cause harm to our systems. We would not be looking to take any proactive discipline against employees who unintentionally make errors. Now, if someone is intentionally or negligently handling the systems or the software, then over time we'll do coaching and possibly discipline at that point, but it is not our intention to do that.
And thank you, Sheila. I know this was discussed by the Personnel Committee. Do you want to add any details or Larry?
I guess just as Sheila brought up, yeah, this is a very complex and detailed policy. It's very well-written from looking at the aspect of security, which is really, very much applies to the utilities being a part of keeping access to the grid and things like that under control. It is quite a step up for our employees at the city and those reasons, some of the comments we talked about it. This will take time to get used to and there's a lot of complexity. I know at the time, just, for example, we talked about, you know, Ben going to a League of Cities meeting and coming back with a zip drive with all the documents on. Comes in his office, plugs it in, goes, whoops, I just violated the policy. Yeah, those are the kind of things that you, it's very simple to do, but you've got to really keep that in mind and, and it's going to take a little time for everybody to get to that point. So I'm glad to hear your comments as far as, you know, requires training and why are we doing this? That's really key to the point here.
I think, and that's well said, John, but the other thing about this policy is it's not etched in concrete. Policy that's in a work in progress and as things come up that need to be changed, it's totally unable to do that with this thing. I'm going to move the recommendation.
I'd like to second it.
Motion by Larry, seconded by Craig. Discussion? Brad, did you want to say anything or you?
Sheila did a great job.
Okay. Any other discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. Motion passes. Thank you. Agenda item number 18. Agenda item number 18, Marshall Liquor Store. We have a change order to consider with Solonic Concrete.
Kind of remember the City Council, attached is the change order. I did insert all the PR details today on these. It's overall, it's a relatively small change order as we get close to kind of finaling out the project, not anticipating really too many more construction-related items. We do have a few expenses left into the overall project. Scope, as it relates to kind of what I would call kind of more cosmetic, kind of finalizing related to signage and things in the store, with that and some blank wall spaces that we're working on some things with. But with that, attached is some of those, I'll maybe call out just a couple of them, but I can answer any detailed questions on any of them that you might have. The mirrored glass was just a security inclusion on that. The concrete on the teardrop, that's basically the, some plaza changes that we did kind of on the landscaping areas you come into the, into the building. This was one where we were fortunate that our Public Works Director was out at the site at the point in time when they were doing the pouring of the concrete, because the design had a little bit of something as he looked at it going, does that make a lot of sense? Where around kind of the base of it, it dropped down in elevation, which could have created some trip hazards on it and things. And so he initiated a kind of an onsite change to the design of it to have a flat surface to it. Made sense, had some extra costs related to extra concrete work on that one. But that's one of the biggest ones on the item of list of changes that we had. There were a few items that were related to electrical items, related to some of the checkout stations that were minor adjustments. We had a few building inspection code, kind of final items on that checklist of, that you had had at a previous meeting that got dealt with. Minor things on the trash enclosure where it included that reclaimed cedar, where if we left that, it was very likely that could get damaged. So we ended up keeping some of that to use for other purposes and then there was a redesign on that that's pending for final completion. The condensing pipe is one where on the cooler, there was an installation of the cooler that included a long, basically drainage pipe on some of that condensation. And it was kind of caught later in the process that PVC, when you have that long of a run, is not allowed, so had to go to a copper tubing, so it had to completely replace what was there. Staff worked with Solonic and the architect on how that process happened and was approved. And we ended up negotiating that the city would not be responsible for any of the labor cost. That was worked out between Solonic and TSP. So we agreed to basically pay for the material add cost, but not for the labor because the argument was is that it should have been designed to meet building code and not, and that we shouldn't have to be responsible for that extra work. So yes, there was an added cost, but the PR included the full request, but this is a portion of the PR because we, they agreed to only include the, the material. The goodwill credit for the concrete relates to, this was not, would not show up in a detail and I didn't have, I didn't include pictures for you, but this basically relates to the inside retail space, the concrete, concrete floor finish. We have an exposed stained treated high gloss finish floor and the workmanship, in our opinion, was substandard on the floor work that was done. So there was some rough areas to it and there was staining problem in one location, some minor things to it. So I don't think most people are looking for substandard floor conditions. You probably eyes generally the customer's kind of up high, so most people wouldn't even pick it out, but we noticed it and there's really nothing you can do after the fact. We knew at the time that the original floor was poured, that there was some workmanship issues before it was even stained. So there was substantial extra, extra sanding or whatever that was done to try and remove as much of that as they could, but in the end they couldn't take care of all of it. So $2,000 was the credit basically for the workmanship related to the floor that was brought back and we're comfortable with that. So again, I'd be happy to try and if you had any details on any of these, but that probably hits the highlights of them, so I'd recommend approval of the change order number five.
Thank you. Thank you, Ben. Any questions? Ben?
I guess, you know, when I originally looked at this and I thought, that's not a good deal, thinking, why are we catching all these things after the fact? Why did the architect catch all this stuff? But as Ben has gone through and explained the reasons, the majority of it makes a lot of sense, that soap and towel is spent to relocation and some of those things that evidently we chose to have those changed over and above that. As much as I really hate change orders, I'm going to accept this.
Motion by Larry, is there a second?
Somebody better second that one.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Craig. Discussion? No discussion, we'll move to a vote. Motion passes. Agenda item number 19. Agenda item number 19 is the irrigation water line for the Marshall High School for the Southwest Regional Amateur Sports Center Ballpark Project. We have a change order to consider. Glenn, do you have this one?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This change order, you can see, is a substantial deduct to the contract. And the reason for it is we had bid the project as originally designed and subsequent to the bids coming in, we had a meeting with the contractor and the school district requesting whether or not there could be some, some reductions in the cost of the project. And it was identified that we actually didn't have to extend the water service line from the pump station into the building. We could actually connect to their existing irrigation system outside the building. And we also found out that their control system for their current irrigation was wireless and we did not have to install a wired connection all the way from the pump station to the, to the school. So the original contract also had about four or five separate items. And sometimes when you have more like lump sum items, miscellaneous things are, are thrown into the cost of each one of those things that you don't know for sure whether or not you're going to utilize all those things that you might anticipate for. So in this case, we broke out every individual valve and bend and piece of pipe and all of those things were individually broken out so that the contractor could say, okay, he'll give us a price for each one of those items. If we use them or don't use them, they'll get paid for them. In, in doing that and working with the school district, which was very helpful for us, there was a, a reduction of $23,300. Most of this then will be direct built, or built by us to the school district. There's a minor amount of pipe work that the city is responsible for from the pump station to connect to our system that's already installed. But the, the majority of this contract, about $50,000, will be reimbursed by the school district. If you have any questions, I'd certainly answer them.
Okay, thank you, Glenn, for your work on this. Are there questions?
Glenn, has this been done yet?
It has not.
Any other questions?
Mr. Mayor. One side, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of City Council. One thing I wanted to bring to your attention as well, related to this and another project that we're working with the school on is that we, we did have kind of a, can't remember if it was by motion or a brief agreement related to the helping to finance some of these costs, so this was a substantial decrease on that. The school district did take advantage of the opportunity with the scheduling of some fencing installation on our ball fields to add in some fencing for their project. They did initiate discussions with staff to see if we'd be willing to provide some financing for that as part of it as well. And we are working through some of those details, so they're working on that install. We will be able to use those fields too. So with some of the credit, I think we might be looking at updating and having a fairly simple agreement, working with the attorney to come back and maybe the next meeting to kind of update that, to include the fencing and have the final numbers of the, of the irrigation to get clarified. So it'll end up probably being fairly similar, maybe a little bit more on what we were originally working with them on. So we've been working on that internally as well. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention.
Any other?
More recommendations?
Second.
Motion by Larry, seconded by Craig. Discussion? Now we move to a vote. The motion passes. Agenda item number 20. Agenda item number 20, Commission Board Liaison Report from my Standby Defier Relief Association did hold their annual meeting actually after the same evening as our last regular council meeting. The, the Relief Association Trust Fund had a, last year held their own, had a, which was good in light of the, some of the retirements that have happened as well as the performance of the fund. So that was held and they re-elected their slate of officers, were the same as the previous year.
year. The Regional Development Commission met this past Thursday evening with the, just the normal business, however, there's a number of new members of the commission because of just changes that happen at the first of the year. With that, Craig?
Nothing, Mayor.
Larry?
I'm not going to believe this, but I did not save my comments, but personnel met last week, and that'll be coming to council next council meeting. EDA met last Wednesday. We don't have anything really exciting there, John. I don't think you report on pretty much status quo, went over what we had accomplished in 2015 and what we're going to do in 2016. That's going to end my report.
Glenn?
No report.
I'll just add to it a little bit, what Larry said, EDA. We did see the, kind of the first cut of the annual report. You'll see it be significantly more informative than other years. We haven't seen the first draft yet. This is just really the first view, what it's going to, formatting, what it's going to look like. So that's coming up at the next meeting. And as far as utilities and weas and means, pretty much everything that they talked about in those meetings, we acted on tonight, so.
Thank you, John. David?
Just the two ways and means meetings.
Very good. We'll move then to agenda number 21. Agenda 21 is council member individual items. Craig?
Nothing, Mr. Mayor.
Larry?
I have none.
Glenn?
I have none.
David?
Two meetings, some of us from the transportation group met with the planner from Mindott District Day last week to talk about Highway 68 shoulder widening and where they intend to go with that. And also a number of folks on pretty short notice gathered by the chamber to meet with Congressman Peterson to talk about regional issues when he was in town last Friday, I think.
And John?
None.
Okay. Then we'll move to agenda number 22. Staff reports.
Thank you, and members of City Council. I'll go through a few things. I did forget to add the Director of Public Safety to the staff reports though, so if you could slide him in at some point, maybe at least after my commentary or wherever you'd like to, Mr. Mayor.
Just a heads up, we'll put you right in between Ben and Glenn.
One thing, just a kind of a note that I just jotted down here with Terry Eaton presenting to the group, I'm not sure the council maybe fully appreciates. Terry's, first of all, is a very highly respected and credentialed financial advisor. She's, carries a lot of education and experience and is well respected within the industry, so we're fortunate to have her. One thing I learned with talking with, meeting with Tom and her today is that she got involved in a, with Fargo, North Dakota on a project, and it's an over, over $1.5 billion project that she is working on, and it required her with some of those responsibilities to realign some of her assignments within Springsteads related to her clients that she works with. But one she wasn't willing to give up internally was the City of Marshall. So she enjoys working with us, and she's from the region, and so we are fortunate to be working with somebody who of her caliber within that organization. So I know she'd be embarrassed if I said that when she was here too, so I thought I'd save it for our staff reports. We are working on some updates that we're going to be working with the media on some information related to some changes on Studio One. It probably scratched the surface a little bit with the City Council, but some of that, we'll try and get some more direct information out on it, but you might be reading it in the newspaper if they end up doing some coverage with that, depending on how it goes tomorrow. But they're just kind of high level looking at that. You know, we have relocated our studio and have been operating basically out of Marshall High School with new office space that we have out there, and then assisting on with some of the programming of the classes out there where Alex Peterson, our new communications person, who helps oversee our program, has been working with them on our video production side, both behind the camera as well as in front of the camera and working with them. So that's been going well. Of course, the, I think it's been documented that the school system, a number of levels due to enrollment projections have been dealing with space issues, and that's not unique to the high school, or the high school has had some of those issues as well. So when we went into the school year, we were expecting that by probably the end of the school year, the space that was a computer lab would pretty well be exclusive for video productions, which was kind of the original design of that space. But due to some space concerns, that didn't become available, and extra classes ended up occurring in there, which limited our ability to do some of the video production, and particularly the studio production that maybe the outside public comes and uses from time to time. Already had challenges going into a high school setting with the public. We knew there were some of that, but now even availability of that became an issue. Fortunately, we had ongoing conversations with Southwest Minnesota State University on that, and again, I'll try and not get into too much detail, but they have a new professor of the program kind of related to the media production level who has experience in cooperating with the community on their public access channels. So they've opened arms, opened the opportunity for that studio to be our primary studio for kind of the outside community access connections. Office space and storage, which was an issue over at the high school, we're working with them to provide space at SMSU as well for that, and believe that there will continue to be a strong, or this opens the door for the strong connections both with the university as well as existing with the high school as well. We expect that there'll be a lot of opportunities in working together with that. So we're going to help kind of explain in greater detail what's going on with that. It's a good partnership. We're working with the attorney on continuing to probably do some franchise agreement extensions that will be coming back probably at the next council meeting. But part of that opportunity will be too, is that by not having a separate studio and making use of what the high school and the university have, we can spread our dollar further from all sides together. And also, as we work with negotiating a franchise renewal, might allow us to become more on one platform for different software and maybe sharing in some of our, the costs of some upgrades that we'd have that we might be able to negotiate through that renewal. So kind of a good thing there, but I wanted you to get a little heads up that we are working on some communications with that that'll be coming out in the near future. We did have our kickoff meeting, and Glenn might have some comments separately from mine on the Highway 23 project. So the first team, project team meeting started with that. We spent a lot of time about process and communications that would be coming forward, so we expect more details to come now as it's still getting kind of formalized with that. But we had a very positive meeting. We expect that there will be a substantial amount of communication, both out, that is just information for the public, but also there's going to be a lot of engagement opportunities beyond just even traditional, you know, open house type of meetings. There will be engagement that would allow for other additional things that we'll get into later, like social media or website engagement for people that might not be able to get to meetings, that might want to participate in other types of formats versus showing up at evening meetings that sometimes are limited. Pop-up meetings for community events that might be going on, where if there's some activities going on where we know there's going to be large amounts of people, having some kind of informational boosts there to get feedback, or those kinds of things are part of it as well. So we're not ready to get into the details of that first meeting, but I think it was positive, and we'll be circling back with more information to you on that, but wanted to kind of give you a heads up on it. Glenn, my comment too is we did get into some details of some of the changes that were occurring. There's some resigning going on related to the Highway 23 in Saratoga project, and some pending adjustments that we've talked about in the past. They are in the data collection phases right now. They're out there, so part of that is happening as well. So a positive first meeting with that as well. Staff, just I won't get into all the details, but some of the things we're working on include personnel, a number of personnel issues that we have specifically gearing up for the reorganization proposal. We'll be coming back to the Personnel Committee in the very near future related to adding some positions, changing parks and public works a little bit. We did talk about that during the budget process, but we'll be coming forward with more details on that, as well as recommending to initiate some hiring processes around that. We are working, I am working more as a lead on succession planning for the Director of Community Services position that we're expecting retirement this year. And so I've been having discussions with the school superintendent, and I'll be working back to discuss processes and things, starting with the mayor and then leading with the full City Council on that as well. So expect some of that in the near future. And then last of all is the Finance Department, positions and reorganization with administration is on the list that we've been working on that as well. So a number of personnel-related issues that we're working on, bringing back in the near future for you. Then kind of tied in with some of the sports center, we're still working on some final details of the financing plans related to that as well, that project, as well as our 2016 infrastructure projects and other borrowing that we might have with Terry Eaton. We spent some time with her today walking through those. Some of that's a follow-up to our last work session that we have. So I'm hoping to again, bring that back in the very near future with some more information with you with that. We learned some more things from Terry today, and it was very helpful in kind of giving us direction on where to go. And then one just last concluding items, and I'm not sure, I didn't post anything, Glenn, so I don't have the map up here, but we've also been spending energy on our trail grant application for the Camden Regional Trail. We did talk a little bit about the alternate route at the work session last council meeting. We have had some contacts with the DNR grant manager who has opened the door to us applying for that realignment. We met with representatives of the golf course today to talk about those changes, and I'm anticipating at the Tuesday County Board meeting, we'll be bringing forward some recommendations with that as well. So probably just do, unless Glenn wants to try and verbally explain it to you under his report. Maybe try and give you the map and some of the extra background with the administrative brief that we'll post here to Friday with that as well. So that concludes my updates for you this evening.
Okay, thank you, Ben. Any questions for Ben? Thank you for your work on all of those projects. So with that, our Director of Public Safety, Rob Bant, you can give us a report.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Pleased to see you again. But Ben thought it might be appropriate just to give you an update on a couple of things going on in terms of public safety. The one was that we've arrested a second burglar, made it with the first burglar. This was on a residential burglary. Following through on that, it's a, so then other locations, a complex operation involving a fair amount of staff time on it. But anyhow, they have stopped. We believe there's a direct correlation between those arrests and the burglary process. So we believe that we'll have that until the next person comes along, unfortunately. The other thing that's going on that's much more exciting is the work on the merit center. And where we're at is really on the final stages with that, and we're at the point, I mentioned last time, that the driving simulator has been installed. The FORCE, mainly shooting simulator, will be the second, third, and fourth of February with installation, as well as a master instructor course. So there's going to be personnel working with CBB, Minnesota West, my department, the Sheriff's Department, and actually even Candy Ojai County to reflect our regional program. When we had, had a, one of the first classes, we had their sheriff, and he was so excited to see and hear about it and how they could participate. So they're going to have one of their deputies participate in this master trainer program. So that's going to be going on. We have the master trainer for the driving simulator set for the first, well, it's the 8th, 9th, and 10th of March. So we'll see that coming along, starting with training soon. As I said, the drivers that program has really shifted, has started and has shifted there. So scheduling for the sound system upgrade, getting some of this finishing work is going on. Picked up some of the props we'll be using for the FORCE simulator today. And again, this is sort of tying together painting and freshening and for the facility. And again, small things, but really, I think, significant in terms of the overall presentation of the facility and really points to that we're going to have a very nice facility here.
Has a open house date been established yet?
No, that's what we've really been looking at, the, is when these simulators come in and that. So partially dealing with the weather and partially dealing with these installations. We're really looking at middle to end of March, and since we're at that point, we're sort of watching the weather forecast, so really go later than front of April, but really talk you in terms of the end of March for that. We want people to be able to come out to the track and go around there, and we like to not have snow out there. So that's really the major thing now, is the weather. So we're excited to begin that, because that classes are already going on and the training's being done. So it's not totally done, it's underway, and that's the one side of things going on. So that's it.
Any questions for Rob? Thank you. Then we'll move to agenda number 23. Glenn?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. And just a couple of updates. Ben mentioned the Trunk Highway 23 corridor study that Mindott had a kickoff meeting today. And for those in the audience who might not be familiar with that, it's the safety study that's been, that's been initiated that includes all of Trunk Highway 23 from Colony Road 7 on the southwest side of town to Colony Road 33 on the northeast side of town. It will include essentially every intersection and every section of roadway of Trunk Highway 23 within that area. However, the Saratoga Street intersection that has been recently essentially completed, but not, it's not 100% done, is not really a focus part of this evaluation, because it has been significantly evaluated for the improvements that are there now. That intersection is still being evaluated for its current status, and as a matter of fact, we received a tweaking of the signage and traffic control in that area today, and Mindott will be initiating changes and adjustments to the signage at the intersection as early as tomorrow. So that will include things like four-foot-high delineators through the intersection to discourage any cross-traffic at the intersection. It will include changes to the signage, like the location of the yield sign and the one-way sign that is currently there together on the J-turn, or on the, on the left-hand turn movements. They will be separated and more independently installed, making them easier to understand and acknowledge when you're driving. So also, there'll be a change to the Saratoga Street sign that shows Saratoga Street both ways. There'll be a sign that shows Saratoga Street with a left-hand turn movement to get into that left-hand lane to, for 23 traffic, and then a right-hand arrow going the other way. So it'll be, it'll be doing a little bit of clarification of signage. That is not a part of the study. But the study will include a lot of public input. That's a very critical path of this study is public input in a variety of methods like Ben had mentioned, but it was emphasized at every turn in our discussion today. So those two projects are related, similar, but separate, the Saratoga and Trunk Highway 23 project. Like you mentioned, the video surveillance, we'll call it, has been out for some time, and that's a real positive use of that type of technology, because if you put somebody out there in a vehicle, for instance, your use or your perception and your use of the intersection will be different if there's no one there. They can also then look at the traffic that goes through an intersection or past an intersection, and whether or not it's individual traffic or stacked traffic, which means probably that the lead car is providing some barrier to the rest of the traffic. They can obviously identify that, so it's not really called free-flow traffic if you've got stacked traffic. The county also, Aaron Dedmore was there, and he had some real good perceptive issues along with our chamber, ex- had some real good perceptive issues along with our chamber exec on the intersection of County Road Seven. Various times of the day, there are significant issues there, and the rest of the day, there probably isn't much of an issue there. So what we discussed is, is there, is there averages that take place, or is it specifics that you try to identify in safety? And it is both. So we are looking at identifying specific backup issues, maybe the new backups that are occurring at Lion Street and twenty-three because of the new clinic and, and the age and abilities of the traffic that may be coming into that intersection are, are discussion points. And that's great for the public to be able to weigh in on when they do their, their study. That study is, is expected to last, was it Ben, all summer, and with some sort of reports toward the, toward the end of the year. So it's not a short-term evaluation. So that's that one. We also had, I'll call it really good news. We've been working with FEMA and the Corps of Engineers on our flood protection system for, for, I'll say, the last few years, on trying to get a, a satisfaction of the nineteen-sixty-three levee system, both for certification and for construction. And the good news that we got from FEMA, who is the entity that, that required the city to recertify or to certify the protection of the Dyke system, has found in their review that the nineteen-sixty-three Dyke system at its sixty-three level or at its current level does not impact the flood protection of the City of Marshall. That's a big deal. What they determined was the less than one foot flow from the river system across the north side of the sixty-three levee that goes through the airport area and returns to the diversion channel, that water would do, return to that, is not impacted by the recent construction, and would be the same at either elevation. Interesting, because now that will go back to the Corps of Engineers for determination of whether or not we want to keep the freeboard the way it is or not keep that freeboard. So it's only a freeboard issue, and it does not impact the city's flood protection and, and floodplain mapping. So that was good news, and we, we expect more good news as we come down the line of whether or not we have to remove any or part of that improvement that we made a few years ago. If you have any questions on that, just maybe see me afterwards. But that, that was a, it's good news for the city and, and the residents. We're working on spring projects. We are asking for a proposal from SEH engineers for the TED project that we, that we've got approved. We expect at the earliest construction on that in mid, late summer to fall, or at the latest in two thousand seventeen. So we're putting together that project for proposals for, for construction for late this year or early next year. That's all I have.
Any questions for Glenn?
Glenn, an older item from last spring, I think, the, our replotting or replating of those parcels along North Second Street and neighboring streets, very complicated it was. Anything new with that?
No. Yeah, the, the issue is, is that it was not going forward because of the several insignificant issues with getting mortgage holders and, and owners to sign. I know that now there is already a second quiet title action being initiated, or has been initiated by another property owner. The first one, it cost them about six thousand dollars to clear, clear up their property. I would expect the next one will be the same. We will be discussing that issue again at a new public informational meeting on the Second Street project this spring with the property owners. And with, with our group, the discussion is, do we use their, this is what we're doing. We're going to be using their legal descriptions for their frontage for assessments, not their mode property, not the property that they've always used. Now, that's the direction that we're heading, and that will be a significant discussion with the neighborhood. And Dennis will have to weigh in on that as well, because that would be our intent, is to use the legal descriptions of the property for that process. It's not a good situation. That whole one-block area is significantly out of, of use versus legal description.
Dennis, anything more on that?
That is when we get to you.
Well, all right.
Any other questions for Glenn? Not, we'll move then to agenda item number twenty-four. See attorney.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. As Glenn indicated, they're starting the plan for the twenty-sixteen projects, and in fact, the first contract has been approved and reviewed for the independent Park Pond sediment removal project. We've reviewed the contract. It's been awarded, reviewed the bonds, reviewed the insurance, so that one's ready to go. We've been working on these MMU issues that were all approved tonight. We've had some internal discussion reviewing and regarding the public nuisance and junk ordinances that we have in town and how, in the community and how they are probably inadequate in certain situations to address circumstances that exist, and so we may be bringing a recommendation to legislative and ordinance committee for some changes to the junk ordinances. Also, my office has recently gotten involved in some building permit enforcement issues. A number of permits are out there that the work permitted or requested has not been completed. We've got blue tarps on the roof. We've got damage done for the storm of twenty-eleven that hasn't been repaired or demolished. And people seem to respond to a letter from the city attorney, because I've had some direct contact from a couple of these folks already who have come into my office, and one has indicated he's very nervous about it, but a lot of times it's financial. Yes, I understand things need to be done, but I don't have the money to do it. What are you going to do to me? What's going to happen? So I'm meeting with some property owners on some building permit enforcement issues, and as Ben indicated, cable TV franchise, there will be some extension agreements coming forward at next meeting. And now to address councilmember Sturrock, South Second Street. Yes, the legal descriptions are messed up. They don't match up, but we really don't have standing. People don't like government interfering with their legal descriptions and their properties, neither do banks. And it's a situation that is difficult for the property owners, but I'm not sure that, and that the taxpayers of the city want to pay to straighten out legal descriptions for property.
I get that.
Yeah.
Although if I were the banks, I should think I would want to have clarity about the legal definition of any property on which I hold a mortgage, but that's their headache.
Yeah, that's their question.
What you're saying, though, is there's, there's, there's not much the city can do to move this discussion forward pending the individual actions that the property owners take.
Right. Yeah, they can proceed individually, or if everybody wants to come together to pool some funds to, to take care of it, yes. But I'm not in favor of just initiating with, you know, taxpayer-initiated fund to take care of legal descriptions for a certain group of properties.
Either Glenn or Dennis, are there other parts of town where you have a similar problem, or you just haven't discovered them yet?
Yes, we do.
Yeah, yeah.
They're only come to light when we have sales of properties, for instance.
Right.
Sometimes a replat of previous, or a plat of unplatted properties. What's it? Section of property, what do we call it, the Club Fifty-Nine Edition. There are some, you know, some property lines that maybe are off by six inches or a foot or something like that, that there are, there's quiet title action out there as well in a platted section.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Dennis? If not, then we'll move then on to the next agenda item, agenda item number twenty-five. Pending agenda items, any questions about the pending agenda items? Not, the agenda item number twenty-six, the information items for the council's information, the building permits. Moving then to agenda item number twenty-seven. Agenda item number twenty-seven is to consider moving into closed session to discuss the potential sale of property, a portion of Lot One, Block One, that Pollgrass Edition, and also to discuss the purchase of property, property off of Highway sixty-eight and the township road that is part of that Ted Grant project. Is there a desire, if so, is there a motion to go into closed session for this purpose?
So.
Motion by Craig, seconded by Larry. Discussion, not a vote. Motion passes, will now go into closed session.